Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second? All right, we're back. So. Called an order, opening statement, we did that. All right, can we all stand for five salute? Mike, can you do roll call?
Mr. Ready.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mrs. Breamonte.
Here.
Mrs. Zhang. Is absent. Dr. Kolor. Mrs. Cecillo.
Here.
Mr. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Damari.
Here.
Mr. Man.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Opening statement, meetings of the board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. There is one opportunity for the public to speak. Any individual desiring to speak shall give her his or her first name, address and the group, if any, that is represented. Presentation shall be as brief as possible, no more than three minutes per individual. There are certain matters that may be brought before the board that cannot be immediately addressed in public. Such matters may be referred by the president to a board committee and/or to the superintendent for consideration and/or resolution. The board rests in its president or other presiding officer authority to terminate remarks of any individual if he she deems in the best interest of those present to do so. So, so thanks everyone for coming. This is our first committee of the whole meeting. So normally this meeting doesn't happen. So audience, thank you for coming. Normally we would be doing the buildings, the grounds, budget and finance, personnel and curriculum instruction a week prior to our public meeting, which is next Wednesday. So we may be sort of, I don't want to say ad hoc a little bit, we might be trying to, you know, we'll be following this agenda here, starting with the old business into new business. The only thing I'll ask board members is, so we're not here till nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night. Try to keep your comments to the point. If we're going a little further, I might, you know, sort of have you wrap it up in 30 seconds, things like that. But again, this is our essentially four committees at once. I'm not sure Scott, how you want to start this? Do you want to just start with the old business and? How do we want to manage it?
So the the agenda, the agenda really would just start by Mr. Ready by, you know, the first, the first order of, I'm sorry, let me just get myself organized here. I apologize. Right. So, so first is old business. We have three items on the agenda for old business. The first item was an item that was, that was brought forth by Vice President Wall. And it's pertaining to the street and road improvements near schools. So I would, I would just give Mr. Wall the floor to expound as he saw fit on that item.
Terrence, you're out there.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I would suggest rearranging the order, but if you can hear me, okay. Wanted to discuss joint projects to see if there had been any discussions between the respective department heads with administration from the town and the school side. They are, they'll be introducing their budget shortly and then we'll going out for their annual bond ordinance for capital improvements. The reason of the timing of this evening or approximate to this evening is due to the capital ordinance, the bond ordinance cycle. So the entrance to SATS, the entrance to the high school are two areas that have been discussed publicly by citizens and elected officials. I wanted to see if there had been any contact administratively about sequencing any of these things. Also bringing in an engineer to look at these joint projects as well.
The, the only contact administratively that's been made with representatives from the township committee was with Chief Alaco pertaining to the traffic signals and amendments that could be made to the way that they're functioning to perhaps facilitate the flow. I had also previously reached out to understand the feasibility of the township deploying assistance with, with traffic direction with officers in the morning and the afternoon. In terms of, you know, the, the, the idea of shared projects, I would actually turn the floor back over to Mr. Ready if he was interested in sharing the communications that he's recently exchanged with the, the mayor and deputy mayor.
Sure. As we've discussed the last couple of public meetings, we all know that Bellworks, a lot of pilot money and payment in lieu of taxes has not been coming to the school district. We've done calculations where the third party financial firm and you're talking about $10 million over the last five or last six or seven years. So the request has been made to the township that we'd like to have a, some sort of shared agreement with them so that we would get a fair share of those pilot monies. Just because obviously, you know, that would help our budget significantly. The, the response we've gotten so far, they're still going through their budget cycle and we should have a better answer next week. Nothing's been promised, but we just wanted to make sure the public know that that's a lot of taxpayer dollars that is not coming to the, to the school district. And when we have a better update next week, we'll let everyone know.
And Board President, if I may, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
And I apologize, I'll be in shortly, I have a scheduling staff who that I'm going to, I'm addressing now. The for the rest of the board, just to, 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 and that's part of the, the beauty of the committee of the whole. The areas that, you know, many of us have experienced and get feedback from folks, I want to see what other folks feel to see what level of intensity it is to cure these issues. Does anyone on the board have any input on entrance or exit, you know, ingress and egress from the SATS school? Or and/or Homeville High School as far as left turn lanes, as far as roadway expansion, you know, widening by the, the entrances of these schools. I really like to hear from other members to see if it's more an item that maybe I'm noticing or to see if other board members have any inputs as well from an infrastructure standpoint, because the school can go to referendum, but we can't be the lead agency on a, on a bond ordinance essentially unless it's referendum. But we can do joint facility agreements and other types of interlocal agreements with the municipality and essentially work through them and then they would be essentially project team in concert with us to affect capital improvements, particularly the, the figure I heard 10 million, but the, the total revenue to the township since 2018 has been roughly $20 million from the Bellworks pilot, which is very successful. It's, it's a kudos to the folks who put it together. But that's the math. So I, I wanted to see, are there any other in, board members that have infrastructure questions as far as ingress or egress or anything related to potential joint projects with the township? I think it would be a great opportunity to share that.
My only comment right now is I support this, this initiative to find out more. I gotta learn more about this in terms of what the specifics are. But certainly if there's, is it more the, the status of the, the actual roads itself or just getting people in and out?
About when we started the COVID, the referendum project before COVID, one of the projects was a traffic study. So we actually, I think, Michael, we spent $15,000 of town for a traffic study that probably you can argue should not have been done by the school district. Cause we don't really own McCamble Road. We don't own any of the roads around here. But we did it because we know it's 7:00 AM to, you know, arts lived this for so many years at 7:00 AM, whatever time it is. There's a big backlog, just like Dr. Dakota and everyone else knows. At, you know, there's, there's jug, there's, you know, chokeholds, choke points. And the traffic study was super detailed and showed exactly how many cars are making a left turn or a right turn, how many cars are coming from, you know, Homeville Park and all those things. So basically all, and, and with a number of solutions. You know, obviously ones to cut into the road, get a new traffic light, some really expensive ones. A lot of smaller ones, I think a bunch of that were put in place or, you know, put in place as much as we can. You know, just to make the bus routes, the way the buses go through the SATS and high school. But we did that just to help out the township and say, hey, look, here's, here's what a traffic engineer said and here are the recommendations. And we have shared it with the township. We can share that same, same traffic study again, if that would be helpful. You know, I know there's a new administrator in the township, you know. So they, he, he may not have seen it. I'm not sure. But that was pretty much, you know.
Isn't there an officer that's on site that helps direct the traffic, at least for the way out? I feel like I see or is that only after games?
When they can, right?
So it's not a permanent?
No, just when they're available and, and listen, I have to say publicly, you know, our local police department does a great job. I mean, more times than not, you know, they're, they're at, there's a cruiser at the, at the schools, you know, whether it's directing traffic or just simply onsite for security that they're terrific. But, you know, townships like school districts are operating on smaller budgets. They have less staff. And so, you know, they're addressing and responding to incidents that, you know, are occurring throughout the town and they may or may not be able to be there. I think they, they are whenever they can be.
For Indian Hill, it seems like there's permanently.
I've, I've never been there and there hasn't been one. Yeah, exactly.
A light seems like it could be a little much for just those short period of time.
Well, I think there was, I think it was the, the idea of having a turn, a left turn and a right turn signal so that, so that it, because what happens is, is it's just this, this single road traffic. And if you're trying to go against that grain, there's no break in that traffic and then the light changes and you're stuck there. Right? So I actually coincidentally have a meeting, I believe tomorrow, which I've set up with the chief in the traffic division, a local police department, high school admin to observe the dismissal and to just advance the conversation around anything that we can do. Obviously short of, of, you know, capital improvements and widening roads, which is obviously another endeavor. But just through staff and, and things of that, you know, maybe rethinking traffic patterns where we can improve it. So that's happening in the short term. So that's another thing administratively, we're, you know, we're doing to try and improve.
Scott, can you share that traffic study and plan with Chief Alaco?
Already have.
Okay, just because I know they, they were not the chief back then and they, you know, the same with the administrator and things.
He's in receipt.
Thanks.
My, my. If I could just add one more governmental piece, the municipality, every municipality in the state of New Jersey has a master plan. And one of the elements of a master plan is the circulation element. And granted, I haven't read Homeville's master plan in quite some time, but the circulation element could be, could be a reexamination where, you know, because it may be, you may have an idea that you think something needs to be improved, but it needs to be done correctly. And the way the mechanism is through the master plan process and looking at the circulation element, traffic engineers would study the, and they would time and they'd look and they get traffic counts and give you a professional assessment that would get funded either by the town or the school or jointly to study the circulation element. And that would include all the schools. And also related to the bus routes, this ties directly to any planning of changing the high school start times to something that's more biologically appropriate according to science and the data that we see out there. So the, the conversation is dovetail. The reason I'm putting that out there is if we're planning ahead strategically, you would look at the whole, you would look at all the different aspects of the current traffic and the current ingress and egress for the students and parents. And also, by the way, EMS and fire and police, and they're all top notch. But the way they carry through, if, if you have traffic jammed up because of school ingress and egress, that ambulance has got to get through. Those police officers and those fire departments need to get through. So these are other things that are answered, that are tangential to the schools, but it all goes together in the master plan. So there's just some items, I think, I, I think we need to, this is kind of an old news topic. It just needs to be talked about. It's not expensive. There's a maybe 10 grand or so it needs to be studied. And then you'll have measurable or actionable items that you could either, or not to, town could either or not partner. And that's a, you know, conversation for a different time.
Thanks, Terrence. And Scott, maybe if, if you could, I love the new board members have seen that traffic study. It's, it's not a bad one. If we could email, just make a note, maybe Mike, if your office could email to the board or whatever, just so they can see it. It's really well done and it's amazing how detailed it went through, you know, and, and the time they put into it. So
Yeah, it sounds like we already.
And I don't think much has changed since then.
Right.
You know, really, you know.
We already put some legwork behind it and it seems like something I'd like to learn a little bit more about as well, you know.
So something else was that, because I, I live on this side of town and have to get out to work through this, this area and one, I don't remember the day, no idea. But one day this year, randomly the light at Holland and Crawford's Corner was blinking. And that just making that, I don't know if anyone else can remember that, that day. Anyone, do you remember the day? You're shaking your head yes, right? Like it's, the traffic went so smoothly that that was a blinking light for like the, like our understanding of people that live in the neighborhood was like, whoa, what a difference just making that a blinking light that everybody could, like it wasn't. No, it's not about, well, it wasn't about that. That's the real backup is everyone just trying to get to this complex at the same time. And if you're trying to come down Holland, it is backed up like past the barn. Like before the high school starts and that, and then what, what's happening is, is like, there was just a three car accident the other morning because people like from the, coming from the barn. People are going into that, like by the barn, there's that neighborhood on the left and people are using that as a cut through that neighborhood as a cut through to come out on Crawford's Corner to be able to go through that way. Now that's getting backed up. It's just a mess.
I don't know how the lights work, but can't they're just being extended green during these times and just let the people get through?
That's where the traffic study could come in. So we've had these same dialogues. I mean, it's missed through in the audiences, heard this over the years. We've looked at a quarter of a million dollars, whatever the God for sake of number was to put a new traffic light there to reprogram the light was easily five, high five figures. It was baffling to me, you know, and then, but there was all, all those, all those things you talk about make total common sense. And a flashing light and all those.
Flashing light was amazing. I just meet like, I mean, somebody going and like turning it on and then just.
But again, it's not our, this, it's the township slash county thing to do. We can try to ask and recommend, but at the end of the day, we don't own that light or that street. But yeah, it's, and that's why we did the traffic study that we shouldn't have done, just to try to help move the cart down the road a little bit. Yeah, 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 it's not exactly. So here we are, many years later, same situation, you know, everyone. But thanks, everyone. Since we got to stay on topic, strategic plan update.
Sure. I just wanted to provide the board and the public with just some high level update in terms of where we are with the strategic action plan process. The, the, obviously the surveys have been administered and returned. We have the results. We're in the process of analyzing those results. I'm going to give a couple of, a couple of highlights of those with a more comprehensive presentation at, at next month's board meeting. We've also been holding focus groups. We had three student focus groups that took place with high school, middle school, and also with Indian Hill students. Tomorrow we'll conduct a staff, two staff focus groups and we held a parent focused, parent guardian focus group last week. So all of those focus groups are good qualitative data that we can use and sort of correlate with our survey data to, to ultimately arrive at, you know, what, what are our strategic intents or our sort of major focuses? I can tell you that one of very preliminarily coming out of the surveys and the focus groups as an area that will very likely be a bucket or a strategic intent is, is community and parent engagement, right? Which, you know, I just note is reflected in this year's district goals, even though that was done outside of the context of a strategic plan. So I think coming in, the administration board recognized that that was a priority. And something that we've been focusing on this year and the data we're getting thus far clearly shows that, you know, engagement, community and parent engagement is going to remain a critical focus. So also on Thursday will be the third meeting of our strategic plan core team, which is made up of internal individuals, administrators primarily. That's again, is doing data analysis and the like. And from that will then, there'll be various task force. There'll be a task force for each of the strategic intents. And that task force couldn't, that task force is going to be much more inclusive. It could include parents. It could include students. It will certainly include staff. But that leads me to a, something I just wanted to raise for the board tonight in terms of a, 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 a mechanism, if you will, for the board to be more actively involved in the process. And I had proposed the idea of an ad hoc a board subcommittee for strategic planning. Where while of course the full board would get updates like this and public presentations and things of that nature, the ad hoc strategic plan committee might be more involved in the work. For example, they might actually meet with our consultant, provide feedback to the consultant. They might actually serve on a task force or spend some time meeting with the core team. So I, I don't know if, maybe just turn that over to, to the president and ready to see if you wanted to, you know, solicit any questions or interest from the board.
Anyone interested?
Interested.
I would do that.
I mean, it can be up to for.
Right.
But it doesn't have to be, of course.
Okay. Well, those, think about it. I got Chris Kim. Terrence, if you're out there, think about it. And the rest of you guys, if you're interested. Obviously we don't know timing of meetings, things like that. So obviously it's going to be something in the next few months.
Yeah, I would say that for, for this group, it would be evening, right? So I would certainly make you aware of daytime meetings, you know, and invite you to daytime meetings. You know, if you wanted to come and observe and, and, and be part of it, you, not obligatory and would not have to be consistently there. But any meetings that were specifically of the ad hoc board committee would happen in the evening so that it, you know, they, you could accommodate those with your work schedule and we'd schedule them at, at your convenience and they might be virtual, right? So we, you know, we could always do them via video conference. Judy could patch in from, you know, from her home in upstate New York. Just a way to get you more involved and, and have the board's view and, and perspectives represented at the table.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if it's virtual and I don't know what time commitment we're talking about.
I would say probably no more than four to six hours over the course of the remainder of the year.
And if it's virtual, then I don't mind.
Four, four to six hours of in-person commitments. Now we'd probably have you write some reports that would be, you know, 25 to 30 hours, but I'm kidding, sir. We will make you do.
I'll share the last spot.
So I can count you in, Dr. Kolor?
It can be virtual.
Okay. You can put me and her as a team. Well, I'll be your backup.
Gotcha.
Alternate.
Well, I really appreciate that. Thank you. I think it's going to be a great enhancement to the, the process to, to have you at the table and, and be part of the work. So.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Item number three on old business, energy update. BA?
You turn that over to Michael.
Okay, thank you, Peter. So what we want to bring back was kind of, we, we looked at some options. In February, we, we had discussions about ACES, which is the Alliance for Competitive Energy Services that district had traditionally been participating in. So there were questions that raised as far as it doesn't, doesn't make sense for us to continue to do that. And it was it was a good exercise for us to review. Well, we wanted to clarify, although there's a five-year membership to participate, the ACES doesn't operate in, in those terms from energy. They operate in a traditional industry, which is 12 to 18 or 24 month contracts. I think the biggest difference that we learned is they, they do a closed bid process versus a an auction that's, that's visible for, for all parties to see. So what we did was we analyzed three different options. ACES, EdSec of New Jersey, which is a, another co-op that's statewide that provides the service. And then we, we analyzed a company called MX that provides the services specific to the district where you're doing auctions. And it's, and it's live for those interested to participate in. So we kind of analyzed this and, and wanted to give an update as far as where we stand. So ACES did go forward and go out to bid and they, they came back with rates for energy at point zeros eight, seven, six, nine per kilowatt. And that's a 19 month contract with the direct energy effective for May of 2023. EdSec of New Jersey is in the process of going through the bid. It'll, they'll probably be bidding early May. They, with a June 2023 start date. And although it's not final yet, we got it, an estimate that where they believe the market's going to prevail, predict, but they were coming in at a point zero eight, eight, five per kilowatt. And then analyzing and working with MX and it's important to note, we've been working with a Mr. Stoller, Mike Stoller, who's been tremendous with MX providing a lot of information and assistance. Again, it's an estimate that they believe, but they, they kind of gave us an estimate that they believe it would be at point zero eight, seven, two, nine per kilowatt. That, that is again, subject to market, how it would work if we chose to move forward is there would be a trigger resolution that you would see on next week's agenda. And I'm, I'm specific to MX if you wanted to go down that path. And the trigger resolution is, is exactly that. If it's at that amount, the point zero eight, seven, two, nine or below it, you would be authorizing us to execute that. And there's no risk not to do it. If we don't meet those numbers, we just wouldn't execute that. So there's a couple of other options as well on the, on the notice. You'll, you'll see that there, it'll either be a 12 month, 18 month, or even a 24 month. But we've been analyzing the 18th month. That seems to be like the, the area that MX was analyzing as probably the right, the, the, the best scenario, but the, the resolution would show three different options at a 12 month, an 18 month or a 24 month with, you know, amounts that if you're there or below, it's triggered and we'd be authorized to execute. So those are the three different options. I think you know, we, I'm, I'm certainly intrigued about trying the, the auction process. We haven't done that in the past. And in listening to Mike from MX, it's really no risk for us not to, to at least attempt it. We'll certainly go through the process and, you know, if we meet, we meet our numbers, we would obviously execute it. And otherwise we would not, and we would certainly report back to the board in other direction. But those are the three options that we analyzed. I didn't know if there were any questions or you know, if there was a direction as far as how you would like to proceed.
Open up to the board, Mikes. Thanks. Thanks for taking the time to do it. Like I said, there's no, I guess, no, no pressure, right? Obviously we can, choice is ours. It looks like the numbers are pretty close.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the timing's good. And speaking with Mr. Stoller from, from MX. And that's where you can see everyone's kind, even ACES did theirs, EdSec's in the process of. So we're, the, the timing's right from what, from what Mr. Stoller said. So I, I think, you know, there's, there's no, there's no downside in not at least attempting or trying this auction process to see what, what provides us.
It makes sense to me and thanks for doing that, Mike.
Yeah, Board President, just want to say, I want to say thank you very much. Now, I appreciate you taking another look at it. Sounds like you have some viable options. The, the risk, risk-free reverse auction, if that doesn't hit it, then it sounds like you have backups. You got classic three options. Choose the best one. Go with the best rate, best terms and appreciate the diligence and, and, and going, going beyond where I think many districts are going. That's from a purchasing standpoint. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, just, just, just to go back. So it sounds like the board supports moving forward with the trigger resolution. Is that correct?
Show up hands if you don't.
Okay. All right. So like I said, what, what we'll add to the agenda that goes home again on Friday will be that resolution. And we'll certainly, you know, update the board with the results of that.
Thank you, Mike. All right, that's it for old business, new business. So everyone has their next week's April 26th agenda items, I guess.
What if I wanted to bring up something for old business?
Yeah, that's, we should have actually number four.
Other old business not on there.
Ken, would you have any old business that you'd like to discuss that we have not mentioned? Even though we asked all the board members if they had any old business prior to this meeting to let us know. But sure, what do you got?
I'm sorry, I just, I just want to make a comment that I want us to, and it's not us, it's not really for us, it's more to administration. So after last month's. So after last month's guidance survey, I have soaked it in. And clearly, we all know that there's a bunch of work to do and it was a great survey and a great presentation. But I would move, like, we're at the point now that of the year that we can, that we can start marketing for a director of school guidance counseling. And I just want to share with my fellow board members why I feel that that is a position that we need to bring back to Homedale. At one point, it was abolished and I feel it is needed. And I think that the survey shows that it is needed. So in this, in the world of school administrative certification that all school admin work under, there's your principal, which is your principals and your vice principals. Your school administrators, which are your assistant superintendent and superintendents. There's your school business administrator, that's Mike. And then there's your supervisor certificate, which is kind of like everybody, all the supervisors that we have in district. That's kind of it. Amanda, who is our director of, are we ed services here, special education, special services? It is a decision as a director of that position that the district can say, I want that director to work under a principal cert or her school admin cert. But that is something that is chosen by our central administration, what that holds. However, there is one special other ed services certificate that is a director. It's the only actual director certification for, for the school employees. And that is the director of school counseling services. And why is it special? Because it makes the holder of that certificate has to have three years of guidance experience, which means they have a master's in guidance counseling. And then they also have school administration coursework on top of that. So it leads them to be uniquely able to lead that department. And I, you know, I have no problem with that person going and reporting to Mr. Howard, you know, as part of his, you know, work. But I just feel so importantly, now that the survey has come out and we see, and I think we've all felt the need from the guidance department that we need to hire somebody that has their director of school counseling services to lead that department. And just while I'm at it, that they should be housed with the high school, which seems to have some of the biggest need out there. So it's more of a comment under old business. But and it's for, you know, I'm hoping that central admin hears me and that, you know, you, not that you need an answer. I don't need anything now, but just to, to think about it, because this is the time to put out to hire.
Thank you. Duly noted.
Yeah, I'll add that I fully support Kim's comments there. Thanks, Kim.
Yeah, I think, I think most of us are all in the same, we know where there's some deficiencies. And, you know, I think Art's presentation last week or a couple of weeks ago was definitely spot on and sort of highlighted them even, even more, right?
All right. I support Kim as well on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. So it brings us to new business, review of agenda action items for April 26, 2023 public meeting. Everyone has your agenda. If there's any specific items you'd want to touch on, obviously personnel, you really can't speak about, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So.
President Ready, sure. Did you want, did you want to run through? You know, kind of as we've typically done in subcommittees, just have the administrator responsible for the motion just sort of run through their sections and provide any explanation for the board.
Sure. That's an excellent idea. I know board member Bria Monti and I sort of explained the same thing. Like, obviously, we would always have these committees separately. So we should start with maybe the business administrator, since you could probably hit budget and finance and buildings and grounds. Sort of, if there's any highlights you want to hit on.
Yeah, sure. Just procedurally speaking, the minutes that'll be on for approval are pretty self-explanatory. They'll, they'll, they'll follow in advance like they normally do on Friday. And then from yeah, the business office side, the monthly financial statements, the, the secretary report and the treasurer's report are standard operating procedures as well that, that went home. They'll be on for approval. We did reference, there are the resos there for the rod grant submission. We had talked about that, that's to apply for rod grant funding that's eligible. Those resos, the board authorizes for us to work with our architects to submit. Very fortunate that the state has allocated, I believe it's 300 million towards rod grants focused on several projects. Ours is geared towards security. So that's what those resos are. Again, how rod grants works, if it's approved, the state would fund 40% of those projects. And then the, the last item that we have pretty regularly throughout the year is 192, 193 funding that you would, the board acts on. Again, those are for non-public schools. We, how the state operates with non-public schools in the public school or the township in the district where the township resides, where the public schools, we actually act as a intermediary. We simply receive the funds and distribute the funds that are on public schools. So this specific funding, chapter 192, 193, is geared towards students that have certain needs in, in our private schools. So that changes throughout the year as students come and go, or maybe have needs that are realized throughout the year. That's what that funding is. And that's why you see that reso come up several times throughout the year. And then the final item is our bills list approval. We're still finalizing items. That's why the, the number will be populated once we, we finish this week out and send that home to the board.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? See none?
President Ready?
Sure.
What I might just recommend is just so it's for the remainder of the motions, just so it's a little bit easier for the, the board to follow along is maybe just we'll start at the top of the agenda and work our way through. And then as we, you know, I'll handle some of the motions, I'll lateral the ball to whoever owns it. And this way, the board can follow along as we run through. Are you okay with that?
That's fine. I mean, we knocked out the first couple already and then the, the back half is done. So take it away.
Appreciate that, President Ready. Just, just going to the very top of the agenda, we, you know, we will have an H, an HIB report because there will be some cases to report enclosed on the 26th. So we will have that. We, we will not have any presentations per se. Obviously, there will be reported, the superintendent, we will have student representative reports as well. The first item would just be the reading into the record of the proclamation made by the governor declaring April is child abuse prevention and awareness month. So we will be asking the board to read that into the record. Michael already discussed the minutes. We have no policy on for this particular meeting. Coming up to superintendent's recommendations. You know, kind of a standard motion is the approval of professional development. You, you'll notice in your digital agenda that there's a hyperlink within that motion that'll take you to the attachment which has the, the workshops listed for your review. Student trips will be approved as well. That's set forth the office and the superintendent, however, in the supporting documentation document that you have within your mailer, that's a separate deliverable where you can see what those trips are. We have, we're proving a, to, to, a student teacher at the high school. Motion nine is the approval of home instruction. Amanda, anything you wanted to add on motion nine?
Just that we have four students this month.
Copy that. We also have some student placements. Anything you want to, anything to add there?
Just an interim placement for a student.
Add to that. You want to continue along with your community-based?
One additional placement for CBI in Farmingdale, and we're over 100 placements thus far.
Outstanding. We will have approval of HIB incidents. I will provide some additional communication to the board in advance of Wednesday's executive session so that you're able to, you take another look at those cases prior. And then, of course, any questions you might have, you can either forward to me in advance of the closed session, but we will spend some time at the executive session on the 26th going through those cases. Okay, we will be accepting a retirement speech therapist, Marjorie Longo. We will be accepting the retirement of a longstanding member of the Homedale Township Schools, Mr. Patterson, physical education teacher, 1981, Mr. Damari. What were you doing in, you know, so you don't have to say? So there you go. Right. So a couple, you know, Sean, do they, right, Sean, did we, I just, just Coach Dvane, he just got his, his letter today. So that's obviously another, another legacy member of our staff.
The question is, are you going to need a new basketball coach? Shaking his head over there now? All right.
Her Buckley's got time. We, we can discuss, we can discuss further offline. But, but obviously stem well, retirement of a playground, lunchroom aid. We have a resignation, additional resignation on, on the agenda. I will keep those particular motions confidential at this time until they're posted publicly on Monday. The resignation, so you'll see we have a number of resignations. We do have some leave of absences, Mr. Mrs. Jiangmei, you want to just, how many leaves of absences, absences do we have?
Well, but I had to take one off, but three. We added some, two more.
And the one is being removed because?
It was a leave to take care of a family member that she no longer needs to.
She no longer needs it. You've since been informed. Okay, very good. 23 and 24 are, you know, pretty significant motions. These are the motions.
Yes. Elena, on 22, can you, just for future, because obviously not, not every board member knows all the, where the people, maybe you put what school, what they teach, or, you know, on that. You know, chose the three leave of absences, just be helpful to know where they're coming from, you know, because obviously, you know, if we have to approve them, just like to know where they work. That's it. Thanks.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Ready. Appreciate that. Anything we can do to, you know, make it more reader-friendly for the board? And we're happy to do. So 24 and 23 and 24, pretty, pretty critical motions. Those are the motions that through which we'll approve both our tenured staff and our non-tenured staff for the upcoming school year. And those, those attachments are, are there for the board. We did, just to share, President Ready had asked, made a recommendation, or request rather, that these sheets could also include, like that last request, the, the assignment, the school assignment. And the, the, the origination date, if you will, of the staff members' hire. So we'll try and get that done if we're able to for, but we might have to, you know, yeah, but that. So those, those staff members will be approved through that. We now get into our appointments of, of staff members. You see the two licensed clinical therapists. These are, if you recall, going back to the Rutgers program. These are folks who currently work for us but are contracted through Rutgers. We'll now be hiring them as our own employees. So these are the motions appointing them to those positions. Happy to report that we are appointing a full-time school nurse at Indian Hill. We have a couple of temporary leave replacements that we're hiring at Indian Hill School, actually two in, two at Indian Hill. Motion 30 is the approval of the power school administrator stipend, which had been the topic of number of conversations with the board. This is the motion that actually the previous meeting you approved the sidebar agreement. And now you're approving the staff member for the dispersment of that stipend. Motion 31 is a, in a, a motion for termination, obviously employee number remaining confidential. And then we have the extension of, of a paid leave for 32. It's a different employee. We have approval of some additional substitute teachers per the attachment. Been some additional due diligence and vetting of those names that are being approved this go-around. And then that brings us back to Mr. Patrissos motions. So a, a couple of hefty, a couple of hefty motions, pretty significant motions, a couple of pretty, obviously some significant retirements, but all in all, a relatively, a relatively light agenda. And I don't know if any of the, the administrators here had anything they wanted to add relative to their sections. Okay, board members, any questions about the public agenda? And it's not a for, speak now, forever hold your peace, because obviously you're going to get it, you're going to get it on Friday. And then any questions you have between Friday and we ultimately meet on Wednesday in public. Certainly, we remain, you know, available for those, so.
Thank you, Scott. All right. We're moving pretty fast there. We're doing pretty good. So next item we have for new business was high school start time. So many years ago, we've had discussions about this. Obviously, one of the things years ago before COVID, we said that let's finish referendum. And there's obviously a lot of advantages we've talked about of bringing to start times. You know, like, there's been a lot of studies, things like that. So Scott, I'm not sure if this is something Mr. Lager, Mr. Dr. Dakota, or who would want to discuss? We have a memo, everyone has a memo about the school start times. And on the back page lists a whole number of topics from athletics down to transportation implications, logistical needs. So if you want to discuss it or how do we want to handle it? I think what I'll do is a lot of positive things. So I'm not sure who.
Yeah, I'll run through it.
Okay.
Um, you know, I appreciate Mr. Lockren and Dr. Dakota being here this evening because, you know, would imagine what will be an ensuing conversation, there might be questions that come up that they might be better apt to answer is the, you know, it's sort of the managers of the building, if you will. So, so really, like, let's, let's start at the high level. So the impetus, right? What was the impetus for this, you know, why we're talking about it tonight? And I think it's twofold, you know, one is, is that there is currently a draft bill in the state legislature. Last, we understood it was not, had not even made its way into committee. But if that bill were to be passed, it would legislate, you know, obligatorily that high schools, all high schools statewide would start at 8:30. Okay, I believe that that would be to go into effect in the 24, 25 school year, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, in addition to, why did that bill even come to pass? What was really sort of this, this ground swell of sort of research and advocacy for the fact that, that adolescents at a time when they're in need of, of quite a bit of sleep are, are being sleep deprived due to, you know, earlier start times. Homedale High School's start time is lower than state average. It is lower, it is earlier, I should say, than the state average. It's earlier than the national average, right? So this was something that had been brought out of previously. The current board asked that I sort of dust this off and, and take a closer look at it to see as to like, well, if we were really going to seriously consider this, what would it look like? How would we do it? Right? And so what, what I'm sharing tonight is, is a plan, it's an option. It's, it's not necessarily the only one, but it's one that we think represents the best option. And so in, in essence, what we would, what, through this, the, the idea would be that the, the high school and the SATS school days would be aligned. They would start at the same time and they would end at the same time. All right. One option is for the Indian Hills day to start earlier. So the Indian Hill day would start at 7:45 and the Village Day would start at 8:55. Now, if this were to work in this manner, and not that we were, were approaching. And not that we were were approaching this work for monetary savings. But if we were able to have three schools starting at three different times, thus enabling us to do true triple routes with transportation. We'd recognize a savings of anywhere between a half a million and close to a million dollars, right? If we were to do this, so it'd be a significant financial savings. It would necessitate that our middle school, our middle school and high school students would be traveling together on the bus, right? You know, so that that is something to 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 note. Now, obviously, and 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 Mr. Wall is right, is there, there is a tangent discussion that goes back to the ingress and egress to the school. Because we know that we're having, we have issues with that with only one school entering the complex. If you now have two schools and two student bodies and an increase of students, that's only gonna be compounded. So certainly, if this were to occur, in the immediate term, we would absolutely need guaranteed. Traffic support at both the entrance to SATS and the high school during arrival and dismissal. And then obviously, ultimately, ideally would be some reorganization or reconfiguring, widening of. The ingress and egress routes from the high school, perhaps, you know, a sort of turnaround, or what did you call him, Miss Brew? Yeah, you had, I remember you had discussed it one time, I remember you had mentioned it, so sort of a turnaround, a roundabout, if you will. So so that's, you know, when you talk about if we were gonna do this, one of the implications, we couldn't do it without either traffic support. Or changing the ingress and egress routes to the school, but from a transportation standpoint, not only is it doable. But the Transportation Director indicates that it would actually be easier for her to contract buses. Because the way we have it now, we're stealing singles from other districts, which is also what complicates the routes and leads to delays. Because they're coming from other districts and things of that nature. So when you talk about financial efficiency, operational efficiency, and again, that's not the driver behind this. But it's a heck of a nice side benefit to do it in term, and also making the the day a more comfortable start time. Which at the high school would be eight fifteen, and it would end at three oh four. And Indian Hill will be seven forty-five and two twenty-five, and Village would remain the same. One alternative is that you could combine, you could keep Indian Hill and Village on the same schedule. There would be little to no financial savings associated with that. And it also wouldn't address what I know has been an ongoing concern within the community that parents who have elementary students in two schools have to figure out. How the magic trick of how to be in two places at the same time, which I'm still trying to figure out, Mrs. DeSello, and I haven't done it, so if somebody does, please, share. So what would the, how would it impact the the school day, you know, in terms of what it is currently? Somewhat minimally, again, like I said, the high school and 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 middle school schedules would be aligned. Currently, for example, the high school operates on a fifty-six minute period with an eighty minutes, eighty minute per lab and a forty-nine minute lunch. So that would change whereby the the length of the period would go down to fifty-five minutes, it decreased by one period. And the lunch period would now be the same length as the class periods, where now it's a little bit shorter, correct? And lab wouldn't change at all, lab would remain the same length of time? Yeah, please. Mr. Lockren, I wonder if you want to come up as well, because I think I might have a question for you too about the middle school. Oh, yeah, you want to come up and. Whatever you guys feel more comfortable doing.
You, I think you've figured it out, we we have faith in you, Dr. Kokoda. All right, thank you for the opportunity to kind of work, work through this, so. You know, the the lab times, we kind of view as arbitrary, right? It did not in terms of the occurrences in the classroom, of course, but the amount of time, right? And the way that they're currently structured right now is there's only three minutes in between, right? So that that leads to a number of schedule constraints, not only for the staff, but most importantly, the students, right? So we got to be very conscious of of those students that are interested in taking courses with labs to ensure that in a rotating schedule, they don't back up to one another. Whereas if we were to reduce the lab time, just only by a couple of minutes, that would allow us to elongate the time in between the labs. And allow the students to use the facility to grab something to eat and not have their day in interrupted as as much as they would if they were running from class to class. So i- in that proposal, which is again, just an example, as you just said, the idea would be that we would elongate the time in between labs. So students would be able to visit the food service provider and then get on to their.
The length of the lab itself only decreases by two minutes.
Correct.
Okay, and and Mr. Lockren, and I don't mean to come off as ignorant here, labs at this, at the middle school?
We do not offer additional lab periods in the middle school.
Okay, gotcha, and 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 while this would represent a relatively minor change in terms of length of periods. How how would this, how would the middle school day change under this schedule?
Okay, the challenge, in addition to the exterior, the the traffic ingress egress, we have a challenge programmatically. Since both schedules hinge on unit lunch, so the challenge is how do you offer a unit lunch? And the way we solved it is to stagger them as we do now, but we would go. Whereas the high school currently has three blocks of academic time, a lunch, and then three blocks of academic time, that will stay the same. And then the middle school would go four academic blocks, a lunch, two academic blocks. So that we could continue to offer unit lunch for the high school first, followed by unit lunch for the SATS school after. Someone may ask, well, that seems a little bit long, how can we ameliorate that? Would it make more sense for the high school to be the four classes and the two, as opposed to the SATS? Speaking strictly contractually, you have approximately twice as many teachers at the high school. And when you teach, if you get an assignment that's four periods in a row, that's out of compliance with the contract, and that becomes an entanglement. The thinking now is to do it at the middle school where there are less teachers, less entanglements, I guess you could say. Ultimately resolvable, but that's the thinking in our first go around on this.
So Billy, you saying you would have, you'd be able to have high school lunch and SATS lunch at the same time?
No, not.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, because right now.
Changes, what would change is that we're thinking right now, the the structure of the unit of the rotating schedule is three classes. Lunch, three classes. To do this, we're recommending that we go three classes, lunch, three classes at the high school, but four classes, lunch, two classes at the middle school. But that's open for discussion, it just becomes more of a problem potentially in honoring the contract. Once you go to four in a row, if somebody gets a an assignment that's four in a row, that becomes problematic. You know, on the high school side, they do have the ability to get food through the hive and so forth, so it may end up that we end up flip flopping that. And but we have time to discuss that and figure out what's the best course of action.
And knowing it's still very early, obviously a very preliminary type thoughts, has there been any discussion with Chartwells and, you know. Who's it, advocate to our food consultant, like what their thoughts on this is, you know, can they do, can they accomplish what we're trying to do?
Because it's it's no different than what we're doing now. It's just a shift in the start and end time.
Right, okay.
Now, and and actually, if I may, the some might be asking, well, why did you lengthen the lunch periods? A couple of reasons, it allows more flexibility at the high school for the labs, I think there's almost like a ten or fifteen minute break now. If you were happen to get two labs, and if you do have a lab, you still have thirty-five minutes for lunch, even if it's a lab day, that's more than enough. Since many schools operate on the twenty-three minute lunch period. On the flip side, for us, we we need to keep it the length of a regular period, because remember, if we're now start and ending at the same time. While the high school's in lunch, we're teaching, and while we're in lunch, they're teaching, and if we're gonna share staff effectively. We've had to really do a dance around staggered starts, this cleans it up. And and opens up the possibility for a lot more sharing of resources academically.
An additional component to that, as Mr. Lockman said, in terms of the the lab time and how it pertains to unit launch. Consider extra help as well, right, if a teacher has extra help on a day, I have lab on a day, but then I have a test. Then the next day, right, I don't have that opportunity to check in with the teacher, right? If we elongate that time, a student can still can still have lab and visit extra help with a a time that would be. Normal in terms of extra help as opposed to being rushed, so there's a couple of advantages to that as well.
Yeah, and also, while Dr. Casco indicated that you would lose one minute at the high school from fifty-six to fifty-five. You'd be getting two minutes at the middle school from fifty-three to fifty-five, so it's, again, all of those numbers are arbitrary, if you really get down to it. I mean, we did very well for years with forty-three minutes, so it's, it's really about the quality of what you're doing with that time. For us, having a longer lunch period while, you know, I I know that middle school teachers and lunch monitors all over America are cringing at more time. But we could maybe start to really flesh out a more viable recess program for the kids during that time as well. Something that we can work on.
So my quest, well, so first, I'm thinking that if it's a longer lunch, that perhaps we can open up extra help and clubs. During, like, like the high school does.
That would, that would be contractual.
So.
Yeah, because the contract line technically doesn't allow for it right now.
Okay, so my, but my next question is. In in looking at any of this, does. Taking away the rotating schedule and going to a more straight eight. Make, have you looked at that, does that make any any difference? And and I'm asking because as we've, you know, talked about. Our scores in math and in writing, we go from double blocks in Indian Hill to a single block. When, once we get to the rotating, it's a single block that drops like every other day or something, and like, you know, now math and writing are only three days a week. Maybe four days a week, like, are we, in any of this discussion, is there any look at getting rid of the rotating schedule and what, how that may affect?
Sure.
In a positive or negative way?
Sure, I I can give you perspectives on both sides, so I thought a lot about it. If the intent is to provide more time for math and English, or math, I would volunteer literacy as well. We can do that, I I will tell you, in our strategic plan discussion. Those the students had with Ms. Riley on Friday, one of the things they really liked was the schedule, and one of the things they said, believe it or not, was. We were dying at Indian Hill, we were we were being crushed with math and English, it's so much better here with the variety that we have.
My daughter is upcoming seventh grader, she was like, isn't it, she was asking when we were doing the schedule, she was asking, is it a double block? It's not a double block, yes, she was super excited that it wasn't a double block, but I don't know that necessarily I'm looking at double block, I'm just thinking.
If we, if we went back to.
Not, not dropping.
I understand, because what what you're seeing is a slight reduction, and 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 you should know that when we first proposed this. We had, we had to negotiate a contract before we had a a plan. And the original proposal was to have sixty-minute classes or sixty-one minute classes, and what was going to happen was we were going to have. The identical number of minutes just repurposed, instead of forty-three minutes, five days a week, it was gonna be sixty-one minutes, four days a week. And so in the end, there really wasn't gonna be a loss of academic time, transportation really kind of. Was a dictate, because we ended up, what was sixty-one, ended up at fifty-seven, fifty-six. And those who are longtime board members will remember the community members who came out that were very upset about the adjustment in time to the elementary start and end. And what that was gonna do by what we needed to do to make the rotating schedule work. When we went to the rotating schedule and then eventually adopted it at SATS, the whole thing is predicated on taking out. Lunch from your daily schedule, by doing that, you're leaving an extra period open. And I can tell you that we went from five elective offerings at the middle school to twenty-five. At the high school, I would, I would say that all of the gains that we've seen in academies or. What is the concentrations, career concentrations, the service things, all of those things. All the flexibility that you see in high school would not be possible if we were locked in by having to give kids a lunch period every day. And it got so exacerbating prior to the start of the rotating schedule, that we literally had kids that were dropping lunch. So they could take a second lab science, and so it really became unhealthy. And so the rotating schedule has completely changed the game at the complex. I would also submit that since we've gone to the rotating schedule, Dr. Kokoda can tell you, we've had several schools visit us. About our schedule, and I know that Rumsen Fairhaven will be going to the rotating schedule in September. And while Township is considering it, and the Freehold Township Schools have a variation of it, that they didn't have until after we went to it. I'm not saying they did it because of us, but it tends to be a schedule that offers a ton of flexibility. To your concerns about math and English, we we introduced support programs with Math Lab. And we we expect to extend that in to seventh grade next year, so that we can support those that are at risk. And then those students who continue to be at risk when they get to the high school, there are mechanisms in place to to address those deficiencies. That maybe the schedule inadvertently creates.
I have a a basic question. Indian Hill School students are younger and the school is starting earlier, so why did we choose it that way? Why not Indian Hill at eight fifteen and high school, I mean, and SATS at seven forty-five?
Yeah, I think the 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 research, you know, speaks to, for particularly for adolescents. The the importance of of increased sleep, and anecdotally, what we hear is that younger children tend to rise earlier. And she's shaking her head with the two-year-old, but whereas I can attest with teenagers, there's there's nothing early rising about them. I mean, you literally have to peel them off the bed, so it's it's a daily struggle, so that was the rationale behind that.
That's scientifically proven?
Well, I I think, I I think it's, I think there, what we, what what's out there is that the, you know, the the average teenager requires. I've heard numbers as high as twelve hours a day, you know, which I, it's like, that's staggering to me, half the day sleeping, although I'm sure they'd be pleased to hear that, most kids. But certainly eight, right, eight, nine hours of sleep, right? So, you know, kids, even the, even if a kid's going to bed ten or ten thirty, which if he's a wrestler or a basketball player, or, you know, a play practice during the winter. Coming home and doing AP tests, it's difficult to get in bed before eleven, and they're up at what, five thirty? It it be, it's very difficult for them, even if they're being diligent to get the sleep, so this gives them a little bit more runway. And they're also tend, adolescents tend to be more active, they're, they might be working a part-time job on top of playing a sport. You know, on top of rigorous course loads, so that was the rationale.
Thanks, Sarika, there was a bill, A thirty-eight sixteen, that was passed March of two thousand twenty-two. It, I think it tied back to a bill from a bunch of years ago where they were gonna do a trial study, then obviously COVID happened and things got delayed. But and and if you look up that bill, A three thirty-eight sixteen, it talks about the numerous health studies that have showed the major benefits, like Scott was saying. To starting late later, specifically for adolescents and, you know, teenager type ages. So, you know, you know, all different studies and things like that, and I know this board has been talking, or and previous boards have talked about this for years, saying. You know, like, it's the teenagers and things like that, so.
Just just closing, a closing, and and, you know, I I hate to to end on a, on a, on a sour note, on a sort of a roadblock. But but the other, the other contractual piece, which I I sort of admittedly turned up later. As I was sort of looking at the contract, is that the only school presently, the the high school presently. Teacher, high school teachers can work up to seven hours and fifteen minutes a day. That's the only school where that's permissible, the other schools, the contractual workday is six hours and forty-five minutes. Now, at the high school, flex time figures into that, there's also the extra help periods, which are an hour a week. And are done both during lunch and after school. But if you were to extend the school day at the middle school and keep in place the current provision. Which is an hour of extra help after school, extra help a week, you would be extending the middle school day. So in the absence of doing some opening of the contract, you know, should the association be, you know, interested in engaging in that? Whereby the the middle school workday was changed, the one way it can be done without modifying the contract would be. the administration can extend the middle school day by ten minutes a day. But that would essentially preclude middle school teachers from delivering extra help after school. So I would imagine, I don't want to be presumptuous of the board, but I'm thinking that's probably a nonstarter. Now, Mrs. Tussil might be saying, well, what about during unit lunch? True, but currently the contract does not afford for middle school teachers to provide extra help during unit lunch like it does at the high school.
But they are contractually my, I'm I have no idea. But if we're talking about lunch being the same for everybody, which is fifty six minutes, my assumption is that teachers don't get a fifty six minute lunch, so they can be assigned something during the rest of that time. Albeit whatever, you know, right, they can be assigned something, I, you know.
There's no, I mean, I believe contractually, contractually, they're they're afforded a a that a lunch of that length. Is that accurate? Yeah. Right, it does not necessarily have to be.
But a forty five minute lunch.
Yeah.
Leaving them eleven minutes.
Yeah, which it can be utilized for.
Something, but it's only eleven minutes.
Correct.
Okay. But now, like, so my my last question is, so this is fantastic and it's a great start. And especially in a budget year where our increase is is significant. Um assuming that we can meet with and come to some sort of agreement, let's say with the union. How quickly can this happen? Like, could this be for a September one start so that we can afford? Get the savings, like, to me, the savings are significant. Um and like, we've been talking about getting a late time, get getting a later start time, getting the complex on the same schedule. I mean, this like, and now and a savings of up to a million dollars to boot. Like, to me, that's like, it's clicking all of the boxes. How soon if we can get the union on board, could this happen?
Well, when considering um, you you know, when considering the the nature of negotiations processes, um just just simply the matter of of finding the first available date to meet to find, you know, to for the board's negotiations committee, which presently there isn't one. So the board would have to identify a negotiations committee. They'd have to at least just have the first meeting to exchange proposals. So I think even just the negotiations piece, because I would suggest like it it would need to be done prior to the end of the school year, you know. Um and and there's a whole transportation layer there as well. So I I mean, I I don't want to, I don't want to offer a knee jerk response to that question that has added the question for September two thousand twenty three, but I think the likelihood that it could be done for September two thousand twenty three is extremely low.
So, poor president, my couple of questions to comment. Okay, thanks. And I I did have a question um also, or yes, a question or request for an opinion from Mr. Lager and Mr. Kokoda as well, because those that's really the key area. And uh so if I can pose upon you, but there are a couple, one cohort I want to ask about special education in that area. How does that, how does that interact and does that work? Um and the um for the folks that um Mr. Lager, particularly Mr. Kokoda, who are here every day as as all the folks in administration are. And by the way, the committee, the whole format, thank you, poor president of the board for having this format. You can see it's not Balkanized. The folks are here working together, collaborating in front of the parents and the taxpayers. It really shows government work, so kudos to everybody. Um the, we've seen the savings, we've seen the transportation savings, we've seen that already. We've seen synchronized lunchtimes. And Mr. Howard was talking about it at a prior meeting, the notion that 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 there are uh young boys and girls at bus stops in the dark, so the parents are choosing to drive them to school because they're concerned accurately about their safety. So that to the extent to which you'd have better penetration of, uh, you know, families that are utilizing the transportation services. I think a couple of things that come up is how, when do you go to bid? How do you bid on negotiations? I'm happy to meet tomorrow, right? So I mean, I sometimes that phrase, you can walk and chew gum at the same time, works. I think that if you're, if we have this budget that's significant, um that that's a big piece of it. Some of the other items are really micro items. Sit down with the union, bang out and have a have a uh.
Sidebar.
You know, exactly sidebar agreement, bang that out. That could be two afternoons because they're watching these meetings too. They're familiar with it. Often these uh ideas die in the dark, but now we're talking, it's in the light, people can share what they're thinking. And the staff members who have to be involved in the decision know the board may agree or disagree or have different opinions as to whether or not we should move forward. But it's a conducive environment to say, what do you think? So when you're here operationally here every day, the question that I have, it's a loaded question, but not so much is, what do you think? Should we make a move? Is it really legacy work for the staff here? Do the teachers and support staff and the folks that are making the gears go every single day already know that we should? But they 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 hold their opinion back because it's a nine member board and they don't want to get in the weeds. But I think we have a board that's interested at least in what you think. So to Mr. Kokoda, Ms. Lager, is it time to make a change in twenty twenty three? Whatever, I mean, we're in twenty twenty three, whether it's twenty twenty three, it's twenty twenty four, putting that aside. Does it make sense professionally? Does it work for the children? Does it work for their, the academics, the social emotional learning? Not just the acronym, but actual social and emotional learning. Is it time? Should we do it? And what would you modify? What do you like or not like? It is Indian Hill, the right start time. Is it eight fifteen? Is it eight twenty two? Um what do you think? Is it a go? But modify a certain few things or or is your opinion, no, you know, tomato, tomato, either one is fine? Because this is the, this is the time, really.
All right, I appreciate you asking for the insight. Um it's certainly exciting, right, to ta- take a look because as we've discussed, right, all the research shows, right? Uh coming out of graduate school is one of the things that uh many members of my cohort had discussed and chosen to do their study on is uh when we get, when we have our students performing at their peak, right? So uh the research obviously lends itself to us really engaging in these types of conversations. Uh speaking of conversations, um you know, with me, right, like, I I don't know, sun up, sundown, I'm cool, I'll be in school anytime. Um but uh, you know, I would, and I have not approached this subject with the staff, uh nor nor the the students, right? So I'd I'd love to hear what they think, right? Because they're the ones that have to, uh they've got to live it, right? And um, you know, I I think that we we would uh professionally need to make considerations for staff and understanding that um particularly, you know, one hundred plus staff members here at the high school, uh their childcare might might have to change and how they they get their their children to school as well. So I'd want to give them lead time as well, but I'm happy to engage in the conversation. Uh, you know, anytime the students are in school, um I'm happy, guys. So um, you know, ready, willing, able to make it happen.
Do you have any insight on the science or the biology? Um, you know, we're laypeople, board members here. As far as the data on appropriate start times in high schools across the country, any insight there? Are we too early, too late, just right?
I I think that that obviously research shows uh that the later start time is preferred. Um in in particular, as it speaks to our our school, we do allow a flex period for our students. Those students that have study hall first period, they're not required to come in, right? And uh we we do see uh many students that take advantage of that. So basically using the opportunity to arrive by eight seventeen in 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 whereas not coming in for seven twenty one.
Without a bus.
Uh, correct, without without the transportation in doing so. So um I think it would be be welcomed. Uh and if you just by simply walking the halls, um, you know, I I there, maybe it's because their block one teachers have uh taught riveting lessons, but I I think at eight twenty one, uh they're they're more pumped up than they are at seven twenty one. Uh so I I think it would it would be welcome. On the backend is where I do have a major concern because uh our students are very busy, right? I call two ten, which with our current uh bell rings, I call that halftime of our school day, right? Uh, we know how busy we are and uh, you know, I think that would be an adjustment for our students in that um we're obviously being uh with nutrition, right? Make making sure they're fueled up for the remainder of the day, uh whether it be heading to the part time job, as Dr. Kasko said, athletics, um uh musical, uh music related events or theater. So uh that would be a little bit of a switch for them as well. But um, you know, I I think because we're so buzzing here, that it would be welcome.
So based on your education experience, do you lean towards a change? I don't, I'm not looking for you to commit one way or the other. Do you lean towards a modification or do you lean towards keep it as it is? Based on your own education experience, because we're relying on professionals.
Yeah, I I appreciate uh you asking. I I certainly would be in favor of us taking taking a good hard look at our at our uh report times.
Mr. Lager. Appreciate, just same set of questions, really.
Sure. I'm gonna approach it from uh a a change mindset. This is a significant change for this community, probably the most significant change in a generation. And I don't think it should be rushed into. I I think um it's the first thing you learn in at leadership school is all the other things and impact change. And um we teach understanding by design or we work backwards with the end in mind. And I think we should take that approach with this. We stated a timeframe, we we have a goal to put this in. I don't know if we have a hard festival, but we know that we can do it if we had to tomorrow, but it would be messy. We're already in the fourth marking period of the current school year. If we tried to do this in September, I I just feel that, and I'm all about jumping into things, but that would be a mistake. Um, too many people don't even know about it yet. Too many people are gonna have to have time to dwell on and think about it. We've taken two or three passes at it as a think tank. Can we do this? But we haven't even begun to consider all the little things that would come when we start to flesh it out. Uh I would be more in favor of of picking a date at some point in the future. We're gonna do this in September one of this school year or that school year and work intentionally toward that. As Dr. Kokoda said, many of your staff have coordinated all their childcare around this. And so that's gonna have to be taken care of. We know how many people were concerned the last time with change to start and end times that were only five minutes. I I have to think that when you're gonna suggest it's a change in time of an hour, uh you're gonna have people concerned. And so I think we we owe it to the community, the students, the staff and and the parents um to work our way through this uh deliberately so that when it does go into effect, because I think we all agree it it's going to happen. But when it does, we want to make sure it's done right with as with as few mistakes as possible that we have to self correct along the way.
And do you think going to happen more on a legislative standpoint? Or just that's the trend that you're seeing from the educational community, whether it's locally or regionally or nationally?
I'm speaking home though. I'm speaking locally, I think, as more and more people hear about it and learn about it and think about it. I think there will be more and more enthusiasm for it.
So just.
I think it's a good thing for us.
So last good, thank you. And last question I have, in the sheet that has a bit of the estimates, the the savings, some of the start times, from your many years of experience, what do you see just off the cuff that you think that is being properly addressed? And obviously, it's only macro now.
Yeah.
But what do you think? What are the parts that are being missed? Like, what what are the areas that, listen, if you're not focusing on this, you're making a mistake. And there may be three or four things, there may be ten, that we're missing or we're not looking at clearly.
Right.
What might be those?
Well, you know, um, some may remember that there was a year when we had uh combined start and end time. I think it was two thousand and four, maybe two thousand and three. And uh there was a lot of concern about middle and high school students riding on the bus together. And uh it lasted for a year and then it went away. I don't believe many buses had cameras at the time. So it's a totally different environment now if we go to set situation. Secondly, um money that we might be saving in transportation might be redirected to um buttress this movement, more support staff for monitoring and hallways and recess, more support for traffic uh control at the beginning and end of the day, potentially more bus monitors, if that's a concern. I know we have some now. And um, you know, I I think we have a great opportunity that way to redirect the money that right now is is not being used to its best best intent. Uh but in terms of uh any major infrastructure or expenditures, I think we're really well positioned to do this. And any of the um, I I cosmetic is the wrong word, support to make it work properly, um I think is well within our reach if we are um able to realize some of these potential savings, transportation opens up doors that we can uh make this really work well.
Thank you very much, poor president. Thank you very much.
Bill, I know years ago, we sat here, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, I forget what it was. But I know it was early on when I came on the board and there were years and and I guess for a bunch of years, there were discussion about rotating schedule.
Yeah.
And I'm glad I know we eventually did it and it worked that well.
Tried for ten years.
Right, exactly. So I remember, you know, I remember going on a tour with you to Livingston High School with a bunch of people on a committee and different people. And uh I totally agree with you, rushing into it would be crazy, you know, my word. Uh, I think using Quatricks as a survey, because we're just a bunch of people in here. Like you said, a whole bunch of people in this town have probably have no idea what we're talking about right now. And I remember the five minute change in the schedules. Oh, my God, that was, uh, we had a lot of people in the audience go, are you crazy? What's going on? So I think at least surveying the parents or surveying this township from kindergarten kids all the way through high school, what do they think? I gotta believe a lot might agree, but there may be a lot of people that may not agree. We don't know that information yet, but I do think Sept- uh September is just, that's just way too fast. I mean, this time goes back to when Deb Ruin, the audience, was been going to same school at the same times forever, right? Chris and all the other alumni that had been here, so uh I appreciate that. And I just remember how the rotating schedule, it's worked out great, because I guess it's been five or six years since then.
Yep, seven, I think.
Seven years, okay, so you're dating me. And then obviously, we hit it in SATS, it's been probably three years now, four, again. Uh but the point is, at least we knew it worked in high school, so obviously it was easy to bring into the uh middle school and obviously it gives all those kids so many more opportunities, so.
And it's it's in keeping philosophically with what the board uh stated in their Home Del twenty twenty initiative, which was to think about this place more and more as a complex.
Exactly.
So one of the first things we did was fashion a time schedule that is consistent. You know, um, six, six years. So that's just one of many things we did to make sure that we we fed methodically from one to the next.
And perhaps I had begun with Ms. Lamoguia, but with both of you there, is there um any efficiencies? Or is it neutral from from your perspective, from the uh the students that you work with on a daily basis?
In regards to start times and end times, that would not be an issue. The only concern would come down to logistical. As far as changing IP, so if the period of time goes from fifty six minutes to fifty four minutes, that would be a change to over a hundred and fifty IPs. Because we have to be very specific as to the duration and time for each uh class period.
Okay, see, that would be an example of something that we wouldn't have considered in our think tank meetings, that we we owe it to ourselves to take the time to be thorough and unearthing any potential unanticipated issues.
No, I agree. And the one item regarding the legislation that was mentioned earlier, because you could simply wait. And if there's legislation, so be it, like Florida, for example, mandated it. But the one thing I would mention about waiting, uh whether it's twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, putting the that that question aside, is that if it's a legislatively driven endeavor, similar to the COVID purchasing that we did, think of all the schools, the districts that the supply chain snapped on them. Holmdel is one of the first public school districts, although it seems like an unrelated topic, one of the first public school districts to reopen because we had the infrastructure, I'll call it the COVID related infrastructure in place where other schools were waiting months and months and months and months. If the legislation comes down, like Florida or other states where it's mandated, just ponder whatever the purchasing, whatever the bidding is, we're gonna be chasing, along with all the other schools, those same bids. So what I'm just simply suggesting that if it is something that it it lands on, you know what? It makes sense administratively, the teaching community, the parent community collectively come come to a consensus that I I would suggest not waiting for um somebody in Trenton. God forbid, frankly, you're waiting for anybody in Trenton. But if it's at the same time, every district is going to be bidding at the same time and going for those that going for the similar services.
Right.
And the 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 pricing may be significantly different and erode that nine hundred thousand dollar, you know, it's only an estimate, but that may erode those savings as well. So I just suggest that we think nimbly, smartly, but nimbly on the timeframe standpoint. Thank you. Thank you, poor president.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Scott, the only thing I would ask, because if we just, you know, put on our agendas to get a survey or something like that, just we engage the parents in this town as we get this conversation, as we continue this conversation. I mean, I don't want to plan on the vacuum and make a change for this entire town when the town really doesn't want it. Because it's the students in this town that we're here for, so.
Yeah, I I mean, uh, I I think the 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 next logical step is to really engage with the association. Um be, you know, because if, you you know, and see where that where that's gonna play out, because um, you know, that's the key piece right now. Um, not, nothing can um can move forward unless we have, we're able to bring some changes there. So that would be where I would recommend starting.
And Scott, we do have a personnel committee, so I presume that personnel committee can peel off and have that meeting with the union, right?
You mean the the personnel subcommittee that.
That would normally be the negotiations. Usually that's the personnel negotiations committee together. So we don't have to create, you know, another committee. And I don't think uh, Terrence, you're the chair for that one, I think.
Yeah, I'll give Denise King a call if she's watching tonight, Denise. We need to meet again.
I just think that one of the things that I was talk thinking about was, you know, why Indian Hill as the earlier time and not Village? And then, because I know, right, like, the youngest kids do do tend to get up earlier. But as a parent, I'm thinking I might need my Indian Hill kid to get my Village kid off the bus, which is actually like legitimately what happens right now. Um, so, you know, I I think how it's set up is actually for those latchkey kids. Um, you know, is actually good so that somebody is able to um get, as long as they can get them off in the morning, that somebody is able to be home for them in the in the afternoon. So, but that would be something to, you know, if we can get the union on board, that then we can engage parents. Then we can engage parents looking at the, but ultimately somebody has to be the early school. So, you know, that can be maybe up to the parents as far as, you know, is it Indian Hill or Village? But.
Yeah, yeah. And I think if we got, I'm sorry, I think if we got to that point, when we get to that point, then I think that's for President Reddy's point in yours. Is that's where we start to put out, you know, surveys to parents and, you know, trying to get an understanding of of what preferences are, right? And and maybe we look, you know, specifically at parents that have kids at Village and Indian Hill, right? And and then pull out that population and survey them, right? Because that's the, that's who we're really looking at. So absolutely, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks everyone for your time. Oh, Chris?
Just want to share some comments. I don't have a stance yet. Either way, I appreciate all the the information. You you may know it and and Mr. Laca mentions as well, from a logistical standpoint, I think we're going to make a lot of parents anxious when they hear that the SATs kids will be with the high school kids. I have, as a father, I'm having personal issues, but I've certainly heard plenty of them of the bus issues that have been going on. So we certainly need to be proactive in that, which would bring me to my point since the last time we've discussed the bus issues that have been happening. Are we getting better with them? Are we getting worse? What's going on from that perspective? We don't need to get into now, just some of the thoughts that I'm having. Which also brings me to this transportation expense that we're all struggling with. Has there been any progress on trying to get these costs down? And I don't even know if that's something we can control. Having conversations with member of the communities, they were wondering, do we have any buses that are pretty empty? That are costing us a lot of money. I don't know if we're looking into these things. Because the transportation is isn't it, this transportation expenses has been an issue, major issue. Which brings me to the the savings that we could have if we do change the time. So maybe some of the conversations should be, we change the times and we can save significantly. Or we have to cut here, because I think it's pretty clear with these budgeted expenses. We're going to have to make some difficult decisions somewhere. So that needs to factor into the conversation, these savings that we may have. The the other note I wanted to make is Mr. Lockton had commented on the survey of the Indian Hill kids coming into SATs and and being really happy with the way math was being taught. Do we need to, or the block of time or whatever it may be, do we need to look into Indian Hill and make a change there? Is there something going on there with math that these kids are so excited about the the change? What's that? It's just like thoughts that are coming to my head. But outside of that. There's always going to be an adjustment to change. People always get a little concerned about change. So I'm not too concerned there. I like the idea of taking the survey to get community feedback. But at the same time, we're using the word rushing into this and I'm hearing that we've been talking about it for years. So it doesn't really seem like a rush to me. It seems like a conversation. It seems like we may be mandated to do something like this. And Terrence brought up a great perspective. I don't want to be in the mosh pit of everybody changing at the same time. I'd have to do a little bit more research. But I just want to be a voice to the parents who've been communicating to me and all of us about a lot of these bus issues. Because I'm sure when they hear about that, they're going to get a lot of anxiety for that. Thank you.
Chris, I think just comment, the board has been talking about it for years. But when we did the referendum, the decision was made, let's finish the referendum, let's make sure it's clear. All the punchables items, everything else is done and then re, you know, we come back to this topic. Because that was one of the reasons, you know, bringing it all together and to talk to about bus issues, I can only speak to high school kids. But I know I see those buses drive by all the time and it's almost like a Cadillac service for the few kids that take the bus. Because none of those kids are on the bus. They all drive to school or they're just not on that bus. I know Indian Hill, I know Indian Hill and Village is obviously a lot opposite, you know, those, those buses are packed. But that's why I really think putting the high school buses and the SATs buses together would be a significant improvement. Because you're still not going to have those high school kids on those buses most times. And if anything, if you actually have SAT students that have high school seniors or high school kids that drive. Those kids now can actually come with their sibling instead of waiting an extra 20 minutes or whatever time that school starts. So.
My daughter's high school bus has 12 kids.
Yeah, my.
Are we looking into stats on how many children are on these buses in light of these significant cost increases?
I mean. Regardless of of right, yeah.
Bus drives around and I know my neighborhood picks up four kids. My sophomore hasn't driven the bus ever. So, yeah.
It's something to think about, though. I mean, these costs are pretty significant and they're not going away. So.
I think that's a great, you know, just combining that is just a huge savings that's will be a, not just a one year savings. It'd be a, you know, keep it a year after year. So.
I think there's a consensus among all of us that is a great idea and it's just the timing. So I think maybe we can move to the next topic.
All right. So to pivot a little bit, I think Board Member Damarie had asked the item number three. The textbook slash book review policies and procedures. So Scott, if you wanted to hop on that and.
Sure. Comment on why I asked to put that on there, should I?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, with all the, in light of some community members bringing to our attention, whether it's material or an assembly speaker. And there's different views on this. I started becoming aware of actual policies that we have that I did not know about. And I'm assuming a lot of the community does not know. And I started pulling them up and reading them. And I think many of them are from 2012. But I think it's important for us to inform the community, our policies that we have in place here. They're there for a reason. We need to start, in my eyes. Utilizing them and in situations enforcing anything that we feel, whether that's a vote by the board. But I do feel like if a member of the community identifies something, we should review it, discuss it as a board, take action, which I would assume would be a vote. And then just move on and that'll make things a lot easier. And I think it'll help bring our community together too. So things aren't sitting out there. So that's why I brought it to attention. The book policy, we've heard from a couple of members of some books that are in our curriculum. I think another part of the conversation, when I did look at the book policy, it mentioned that the board approves the books. And we were trying to get some color on that. I think it's either through the curriculum. But I also want to form the community that the board is not recommending books to be utilized so that they're not getting misunderstood. Maybe we should make it clear for them. Any books that have been brought up, I think one was the. Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, which I did look up. I mean, it's clearly nationally, one of the top controversial books. I think there was another one, The Hate U Give. I don't know if that's still in there. So if we can put that up for a vote, if that's how it works, to see what board members either want to keep it in the curriculum or let's just remove it. And then we can button it up and move on. Thank you.
I I think it would be hard for me to vote on whether to keep books or not, unless I've read them. And if I did read them, it would still be a subjective opinion, my own personal opinion. So I can't really speak, you know, for the community. So as a board member, I have, I don't think I'm adequate enough to read and give my subjective. And I'm not able to read all the books anyways, for me to read them all and approve it, for all of us to read it and agree upon it were difficult. So it's better to for me to depend on someone in the administration. I've put the onus on Scott, for that matter, to approve that and and leave me out of it because I really cannot read every book.
I I understand your perspective, Dr. Clor, but in the policy, it does state that the board approves this stuff. So we were voted by our constituents in the community to make these decisions. So we either have to rewrite the policy or we need to act on the policy. Because I don't want to sit here as a board member and have some community member come up and be lashing out on us as board members. Why did you put this book in the curriculum? Because if they did any due diligence or homework, it clearly states.
Agreed.
That that was my.
So, right.
Just to interject for a second, perhaps I can provide some perspective that that might help inform the board conversation. And then, you know, I think it could be helpful, what I have to share, if I may. I appreciate it. So. So when you, when you look at the policies, the policies, I think, fall into into two different categories. You have the policies that that outline the process and with them the criteria for how administratively, right? Because at the end of the day, the administration in concert with the curriculum writers. Make decisions about what books to put into the curriculum, write the curriculum and what books are going from from their professional perspective. Are going to best accomplish the objectives of the curriculum and best align with the standards, right? And so when you look at those policies, you'll see a number of different types of criteria. And they speak of age appropriateness. They speak of providing a balance of viewpoints. They speak about, again, you know, connection to the standards and and things of that nature, right? So so that I would say that those policies are of one ilk. There are also some, 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 some local processes that have been developed really since Dr. Irwin came on board. There weren't necessarily internal vetting processes and rubrics that were utilized prior to that to make those decisions. You know, they were based upon the professional judgment of of teachers. And 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 in defense of the board, you you get a a whole slate of of curriculum projects that were done in the summer. They go on one agenda. You you approve 12 curriculum writing projects. And within each of those curriculum is a list of books that are being recommended for the curriculum. And unless you're, you have some context and perspective, there's really no way for you to understand whether a book that's being recommended might be considered controversial. And and I think that's where the first learning point comes in, right? And not unlike the changes and procedures that we've made with assemblies, it's really about changing the way we approach bringing content and materials forward to the board, right? So henceforth, really, when we we bring forward curriculum on the board side is saying, hey, you know, the professionals. Believe that this is a really important book to utilize for this curriculum in this unit. You should know, and as a superintendent, I've looked at all the angles here. And notwithstanding the fact that there's a slightly inappropriate passage in the first chapter. I really feel that the good of this book and the didactic nature of this book outweighs the fact that there's a slightly off color first paragraph in the first chapter. Now, you don't have to agree, right? But it's important for you to be equipped with that in that perspective and that information in order to make an informed decision. So that's step one, is that we are being, we are predicting and being forthright with the board. About titles or things that may be considered controversial. And that's really on Dr. Irwin's, that's Dr. Irwin's responsibility. It's my responsibility, to a lesser extent, the supervisors, that we understand what we're putting forth and we can be proactive and transparent about that. And that that has not happened to date, right? And so that that needs to happen moving forward in that approval process of curriculum. Same thing goes for outside speakers if we were going to recommend those as well. On the parent's side, right? I think what we've done this year in terms of the process for health education is a great boilerplate moving forward for other things. And I want to credit Mr. Lockren in a conversation that we had recently, an internal meeting. Great idea, which is moving forward to 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 post our book lists online. With active links that bring parents to descriptions of the book, awards the book might be written. And even on some level, if it was considered a controversial book. So that they have awareness of that book, not after their child's read it, right? But but in advance of when they've read it, so that in the event that they have a moral or ethical objection to it. Which under the law, they may object and they may ask for their child to have an alternate assignment. They can do that in a timely fashion. So I think that's takeaway number two moving forward. Is providing transparent information to parents on the books that are approved. Because the reality of it is, is that, and and if I may, that we can't get ourselves into a situation where. Where, well, I guess it's really the board's prerogative ultimately, where one, two, six parents object to a book. And all of a sudden, we're pulling books off the off the shelf, even though they might be the professional recommendation of the professionals. But it's about the process by which that book arrived there, right? And that the board was aware of it. And ultimately, the board endorsed it in addition to the administration. And I think that's been a missing piece. One additional thing, and this is just me more speaking as a superintendent. And I said this in the meeting, the aforementioned meeting, is I think we need to strive to 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 find titles. That accomplish our educational objectives. If if at all possible, that that are not seen as controversial, right? And and that are that do not insert additional pornographic language or violent imagery. Or any of the things that are are ubiquitous in our children's life, if possible. Let's only insert titles with those kinds of things if 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 we really feel that there's no other book out there that can do that, right? And if we, and we truly believe that, no, you know, this, they need to read this, they need to read that scene, they need to see. Or is there another book that maybe doesn't have that that can accomplish that? I is my personal view as an educator and as the superintendent is, I think we need to strive for that. And that when we arrive at a point where that where that, you know, we say, you know what, this is essential, right? That we've arrived at a process, because I think our kids have all sorts of of negative inputs all around. That's just my personal opinion. But at the end, I don't make the decision singularly. And and I want you to lead you to the public complaint and grievance policy. Because in the event that we do get a public complaint or grievance about a book. Basically, it it falls upon me as the superintendent to put together a committee that's made up of professionals internally to review that book. And then bring that information to the board to help inform your decision about whether you want to remove that book from the curriculum, right? But you're doing with all the available information. And I promise this is my last point, in which case I'll turn it over. Is, you're right, the policies were last updated in 2012. They need a massive refresh. Not the least of which is that the curriculum department is not really mentioned in any of the policies, right? So and that's not to say that I don't have faith in the building leadership. I do. But in the end, the curriculum department should play a role, at least tangentially, in some of these processes. That are that are in the in the policies themselves.
So I was actually was just going to say that because we've had, we did have someone speaking here last month about a book. And in my head, I'm like, did they talk to the teacher? Did they talk like the chain of command, right? They talked to the teacher when they, did they go and talk to building level administration? Did they go and talk to the the director of curriculum? Or did they just come straight here to make a public splash to try to get, you know, and and we're not the ultimate stopgap, right? Like there's, there are just in general for for anything. And I'm happy to hear, like, for the public to come and and speak and hear every, you know, the good, the bad and the ugly. But at the same time, I also want to hear that I've done, I've, I've done my due diligence and I've spoken to X, Y, and Z. I'm not happy with my, you know, with the those outcomes. And so now I'm here. And I think that we, you know, all need to be cognizant that, you know, we should be the final stop, not the first stop. And, you know, if we, if in general, would, no matter what it is, I think that if if we can follow that chain of command. I think we can end up in a much better and more cordial place with with one another.
Thank you for all that. I I believe we are the final stop. I mean, our community members have come up and spoken thankfully, and I don't think anybody's digging through books until one comes along. I know I'm certainly not digging through books. A lot of this is voicing for community members. Did we provide a clear explanation for that one particular book, as you had mentioned? We said, hey, we'll provide a clear explanation on why we need to use this book for this one book that, when I pulled it up online to do my homework, it said was banned. One of the top 10 books for profanity, violence and pornographic contexts. I gotta assume there's other books that we can replace this with. And again, I'm just looking at the first line of the adoption textbooks. The Board of Education shall approve all textbooks used in the educational program of this district. I'm not looking to be the front line to decide what the books are. I'm just looking to be here for my community members who have issues with the book. And we are here as the board to discuss this, because if we're not, then why are we here? And I do think that when the book like this comes in question, I would put it up to vote and say, I vote to get rid of this book. What does everybody else feel? And if it is approved that it gets voted to get rid of the book, we find another book. And that goes for a lot of the other things. I mean, the controversial issues, which I brought up last week, last meeting, you know, letter C, be related to the goals of the board. So the question is, what are our goals? And let's talk about them publicly. Because one of the biggest things about the issues I've had with this controversial issue, which is more of a problem for me personally than the textbooks. Is anybody coming in to speak with our classroom, students should be conducted in an unprejudiced way. And and we don't want to get into it, but there's certainly been some speakers coming in that, in my view, are speaking in more of a prejudiced way. And not necessarily always factual. And what do we do when the situation happens? So we are coming in at the end here. The book's already out there in the curriculum. So let's do right by the community. We had community members. Now, yes, they can follow the chain of command. And that's what I would recommend them to do, but the chain of command gets broken if the staff and administration is not taking action on this stuff. So, you know, we are here as a board to support and oversee and help. And I I just think it's a quick conversation of a book. The board could approve to keep it. We move on. They can approve to get it out. And we do the same for all this other stuff. But I also will say that I appreciate the administration listening and and we have made some changes moving forward in terms of speakers or or material. That may be controversial, getting approved or run by the board first. So I do appreciate that you're listening. But we do have a specific book here that was mentioned. And, you know, you mentioned just before pornographic, you know, it states pornographic material. And, um, you know, you mentioned just before pornographic, you know, it, it states pornographic material. Um, are there no other, I guess the two questions are, did we provide these community members with a clear explanation why the book needs to be in our curriculum? Um, I don't know who selected the book, maybe that's a staff member who needs to explain that. Or, um, what are we going to do about it?
My understanding is that the, the book is not that this is, and I have a number of thoughts and response to your, your comments, Mr. Demare. This book, from what I understand, has been in the Holmdel Public School curriculum for some time. Um, this is not a new book, um, within the curriculum.
Also have they written any other complaints other than the one parent that came and spoke?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, but you know, so, so my, listen, you know, um,
But real quick with Kim, many people are very, most people are uncomfortable speaking up. Let's just call it what it is, especially.
How do we know that? That's an opinion.
Well, okay.
Because I've been on this board for 10 years, but I've seen when there's an issue, that audience is packed. When there's something going on, they come and speak. I don't think they're afraid, so I would have to disagree with you there.
Okay.
And if I like the, if there's a grievance, I like the chain of command, go through it. So that, you know, and I do think 2012, absolutely it should be updated because a lot of, a lot of has changed in the last 10 years.
What's the process for updating a policy?
That's a.
Well, it's actually, it's, it's, it's really, it's actually one of the bona fide roles and responsibilities of the board. Is the board is a, is a policymaking, uh, body.
But also, but also, uh, real quick, um,
I, I don't, I didn't mean to be glib.
No, 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 this is fine. You know, I appreciate, respect all the conversations. I, I don't get sensitive. So I, I disagree with that mentality of saying only one person. So because one person, we're just cutting them out. You know, I thought we're supposed to always bring the minorities up, the minority view. And also if it's one person or 500 people, there's nine board members, let's just throw it out there. Do we want to keep the book or not? It's that simple. I mean, that's, that's the way the policy, we approve the books. So if we're approving the books, we're also responsible for.
That's technically not the way the policy works. And, and I, and I, and I, and I think it's, it's written in a way to sort of protect the board. And, and, and let me, let me, uh, let you know what I'm thinking here. So, so technically, um, that public complaint process is really, it's the responsibility of the superintendent to, to, to provide information to the board. That, yes, that ultimately informs a vote, right? Like, so, so are, are you within your right and jurisdiction to ultimately bring a vote, whether to keep this book in the curriculum? To, yes, 100% you can bring a vote forward to, to, to make that decision, right? The question becomes is, you know, having for, for the sake of the legitimacy of the decision as perceived by the community, that the community understands that you've been presented with all the information. And, and, and so not simply just, okay, so, uh, a, a parent came and, 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 and read an excerpt from the book, right? And, and you did a Google search and you saw some things. Um, but is there information maybe for other board members that would be helpful? That, for example, it is, it's typically, from what I understand, a fairly common title in middle schools. Um, it has won a number of national awards. Just so that you have all the information. And then if, notwithstanding that, all that information, you land in the same place that you are now. Well, at least then, when you make that vote in the eyes of the public, and I don't want to be presumptuous here. The public's aware that you had all the information that was necessary and you voted the way you did. But at least you did it with the information, right? So what I would suggest, what I would suggest is in, in, for the May committee, the whole meeting, will be, Dr. Irwin and I will be prepared to give a, you know, sort of a five minute overview of this book. And any information that we think might be useful and for the board's perspective. If in fact, there is a motion to vote on whether to keep the book in the curriculum and it's seconded and that, and that vote happens, that you have the information that you need to make an informed decision. Is that fair?
I think that's very fair, as long as we're providing what you had mentioned, we're, we're providing why we need to keep this book in.
Yeah.
And confirming that there's no other books to consider. And if there are other books to consider, maybe throw a few out there and then we take it from there as a board.
Absolutely. And, and I think the, the, you know, and, and I, what I'll mention also is that we're the, the state standards are up for, up for revision again. Dr. Irwin, when did those come online? 2024. So, so what this, and this is an exciting opportunity because for all of our English language arts curriculum, we have an opportunity to, to, to pull them open, right? And, and, and look at everything that's in there. But yeah, we will, we will present on some broad brushstrokes about the book. Good, bad, indifferent. We'll talk about where it sits within our curriculum in terms of the unit, why it is where it is. And, you know, this way the board has, has the full scope of information. And, um, and, and we, you know, we, we could also present, I could ask Mrs. Arciero, um, you know, if she has this knowledge of, um, you know, are there, have there been other books here in Holmdal that have been used to teach the same themes and topics? Um, are there other books that are taught in other middle school curriculums that are used for the same topics? And we can provide that perspective. So at least then, you know, the board has all the information on both sides of the coin um, to inform the decision ultimately, if they feel that this is a book that as a board, you want to keep in the canon or not. And we can be prepared to do that for you in May.
Dr. Gascon, are you talking about new, uh, new books or these are existing books that are in the curriculum?
I'm just talking specifically about this one book about which there was a public, uh, uh, concern.
Yeah, I, and I, I agree with, uh, you know, trying to, trying to circumvent the, uh, you know, controversial materials before they enter the curriculum. That, that made a lot of sense. I like that idea. Um, but I, I can't agree with the complaint. Uh, you know, for a parent to complain, first thing they have to be is aware. You know, they got to know that this, this, what the, what the student, you know, or their, their child is doing. Secondly, they have to come forward and they have to, you know, make the complaint. So I, I, I think silence is, is complacency in that situation. And I, I think a lot of people don't complain or, or come forward with, with concerns. You know, I think they, you know, maybe they don't know about it or they're, they're just, life gets in the way and it's, you know, turns, you know, weeks, it turns into months and, and life passes by. So.
I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Man. And, and look, I mean, I think, I think we're again, I, I think we learned some valuable lessons through the whole, whole health education process. Um, and while, you know, certainly moving into year two, we're going to make some adjustments and we've learned some lessons. I think a couple of really sound takeaways, you know, and, you know, moving forward is it's, it's not just about health education, right? Because, you know, it, it's really this idea of, of really providing parents being forthright and transparent with the things that we're teaching and the, and the materials we have. Because, um, you know, under the law, parents have that, that legal right, right? To, to, if they feel that the materials being introduced or taught are contrary to their morals or their ethics or their religion. I think as a school district, we have the, the, the responsibility to ensure that we're, we're, we're providing them access to that information. You know, what they do with it, whether they engage with it, you know, that's, that's up to them. But we need to make them aware of it. And I think we did that really well with the health education materials. And, and I think that's kind of why we're in the pocket we are now with it, where we're not really hearing a lot about it. Because we, we gave people in detail, vast details about what they were going to be receiving, right? So people could make informed decisions. So if Mr. Ready, I know it provided, does that seem like sound? We can break and bring, uh, information forward in May and, 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 um, you know, have an open conversation about the benefits and the, you know, what might be the controversies and concerns. Board has the information they need to, to make a decision.
And Chris, thanks for bringing it up. I think it's actually solid, you know, that we do this, especially, you know, asking the administration to give a hard look at the books that we have out there. The new ones and the ones that have been there a long time. You know, times change, things change, people have different opinions, you know, society looks at things different ways. So I think it's, it's, it's healthy to do that. You know, it's healthy to see, you know, what, which books should we teach and our kids should be looking at, reading, teaching and things like that.
And also showing the parents that they're actually being listened to and heard, not just hearing their comment and doing.
Exactly. Like just, you know, just changing 2022 to 2023 moving forward. So, thank you. Uh, so that's it almost. Uh, so before we have questions or comments from the public, just want to, uh, ask the board if there's any other items anyone wants to discuss. This is sort of our committee week, right? You could call it. So if there's any other items either for this meeting or for next month or what have you.
I just, I had a conversation with, um, Mr. Pichardo, just that everyone can know that to be looking forward for another monetary donation from H Y A A for some, um, for a new basketball scoreboard. So that's going to be coming, I, I believe in Indian Hill. Yeah. So that's going to be coming forth.
Very nice. The only comments I have is, uh, a couple of years ago before COVID, I think, Mr. Loggins, if you remember, you know, uh, we had the, what was it called? The pediatric heart and concussion screenings. I don't know if you remember that. And I just bring it up now. I'm not, it, it, for me, I think it would probably fall under building grounds safety. I'm not really sure what committee, but it's something I think Scott and it was be, well, before you were here. We offered it to a lot of the student or to all the students in district. I know my wife took the two kids to take it and it basically does it. It's like a pediatric heart screening to see if your kid might have a certain issue or something like that.
And I think they did that after Jack Dowd passed away.
Correct. And it's sort of, I don't want to say fell off the radar, but because of COVID, it hasn't happened again. And I know I've talked with different parents and things. So if the request would be, if we could dust off however we did that, I know that was wildly successful. I know a lot of kids in this district went to other schools to get their screenings because at that point we didn't have one ourselves. But that's something we can look into because I think that was a great thing we offered. And, uh, especially for, you know, the parents kind of teenagers, things like that, that haven't done it before. So. And then the only other thing I know, uh, even though we have a public meeting next week, the HFE gala is Saturday. Uh, battle of the faculties was two weeks ago, I think. I'm not sure Indian Hill won. Yeah. Congrats to Mrs. Moreno who's not here, I don't think. And then I heard they did a really great job and I think they have 400 plus, uh, folks going to the HFE gala, which is the, uh,
Yeah, everyone have fun at that. I'll be in Virginia, but you all have fun.
Make sure we win a lot of stuff.
Something that I'd like to add to an agenda or a conversation we can have, just tell me when, since we're learning about this new meeting format. A lot of conversations I've been having with other parents and even myself. The quality of food that we're offering the students is a topic that comes up. It comes up and.
Next month.
I, I, is that where?
Next month, Chart Wells will be here with Ed Service, or at least that's what the
Okay.
Business administrator promised me a couple of months ago.
Yeah. Well, last year you put it out to bid and how many people took the bid for school? One, the one that we have.
Last year was COVID, uh.
But if anything, the goal was a bunch of years ago, we had them here and they would come and talk in front of the town and talk about what new services they're offering, what things they see at each of the four different schools. I remember back in the day, we had a top 10 list of each of the schools, which is always interesting to see what the kids eat or don't eat. Uh, and just have them talk to us about their, what they're doing for healthy food choices and all these different things. Uh, so I think, you know, and advocate is our school, uh, food consultants who would be working hand in hand with Chart Wells. And it'll be interesting, that's what I was asking before about the, uh, uh, the, you know, changing of the times if it affected them, but.
As a confirmation, if a board member wanted to do onsite to see how the food is on a particular day, contact administration, set up a drop in just to see what the kids are saying and.
Sure, sure. Makes sense. Absolutely.
Thanks. Dr. Gascon, I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost in the shuffle because more important, the, the most important thing out of our comment was the, uh, the thing Mr. Locken was saying from the survey from the fifth and sixth grade on that math, if we can look into that to see.
Can you give me a little color on that?
Mr. Locken, can you tell me what you, you said in the survey, the Indian Hill kids were coming up and they loved math and, and the way it was being, uh, the bracket of time or whatnot. Yeah. So what?
This wasn't, this wasn't scientific in any way. It was anecdotal. It was 15 middle school kids in a room that said, boy, we, we were dying in math last year. This place is so much better because it's shorter periods, more variety. That, that was it. That's all they, she asked, what, what are the things you like about stats? And that was one of the things.
Because how long is the double block right now at Indian Hill?
It's like, uh, 100 minutes.
Yeah, it's a very long time to be in one.
It's an hour and 45 minutes.
I, I think that, you know, one of the things that's, that's going to emerge from the strategic action plan. And it, it, it won't necessarily be like a community based task force is like really looking, looking at our schedules, right? Um, and speaking with Mrs. Barrett, new principal of Village School, you know, Mrs. Vitali at Indian Hill. The schedules need to be looked at, um, big time. And of course, obviously we've had a lot of conversation about, um, you know, the middle school and high school schedule today. So I guarantee you that that's going to be at least in the internal administrative task force, looking at schedules.
Um, Pete, I emailed you, but just, um, and I'm sure you'll forward it, but for next committee of the whole to, I would like to discuss, um, complimentary testing. Cause we had said that we would put that off to a committee of the whole. So I'd like to openly discuss that. And then I did just email you again. Um, I'd like to also have a discussion. I'm getting a lot of negative feedback about National Honor Society and the new, um, rules. So just he'll forward you the email and then we can discuss it at the next committee of the whole.
Thank you. Members of the public, anyone want to say anything? Obviously we'll be here again next week. So, you know, more than welcome to come as then as well.
Daniel LaHaj, 34 Roberts Road. I just wanted to say I'm a big fan of this proposed idea for moving up the middle school and high school schedule to a later start. As a father of a boy who's a junior and a seventh grader, would be a big relief having them leave at the same time in the morning. And, um, I mean, my high schooler is the first pickup in the morning. He's got to be out the driveway at 6:25. He's there 6:26, he walks the 1.2 miles. He doesn't have any study halls, taking four APs. He's tired, he's drained. I think it's, it's a big help for parents, for future parents down the road who are going to have more than one kid who are in that six year span.
Thank you.
All right. I see no more. Oh, sorry.
Funny, funny Peter. Sorry, my, the apparent historian's going to get up now, uh, since I have best attendance. Um, I just want to give a little history because I do remember when this came up several times. But when Pete talks about massive people came here because of the five minute time change. Specifically it was village school. And the reason is because at the meeting, I was on the village parent board at that time. So I remember sitting in a meeting and all of a sudden the vote was about to happen to extend the school tape for village for five minutes. And I'm a parent at that time of two kids, I think in village school, and I had no idea. So how is everyone going to vote on this when typically an agenda comes out? You have the information and if you're concerned about it, you come here, like most people don't, you people. Uh, but you come here and you voice your concern before the vote. So I got up and of course with my big mouth and said, you know, I'm not aware, our school's not aware. And we found out that, you know, the superintendent at that time and the administrator at that time, the superintendent had not informed the administrator, the administrator wasn't aware, so did not share it with the school. So what we asked is that the vote please be put off until the next meeting so that the parents could be informed and if they had a problem with it, they could come. Hence the next meeting, the room was full. And a lot of the perspectives that they had were interesting. I didn't have a child in dance or gymnastics, but the parents were getting up and saying their concerns were that they had kids in gymnastics or dance. And when they got there to Middletown Gymnastics or whatever, those kids had already been out of school a half hour. Our school was already, after these kids got off the bus, getting off at four, 4:15 and now it was going to be 4:15, 4:30. So they were coming into these after school activities and classes in the middle of what was already organized because the other schools got out at a decent time. So they were late to that. The other thing was H Y A A and the sports and all the teams would have light longer. They could start their sports earlier, right after school, since most of our fields are not lit. Unfortunately, they would have a longer time to have light instead of getting home at 4:30, going over to the field at five and having a 20 minute practice before it gets dark in the winter. So that's just some perspective of, that I think it would be favorable for the younger grades to start earlier, get home earlier. Um, the other thing I would say is if you're going to survey, like you said, I think it's helpful to get the pros and the cons and include that because I don't think, I know I hadn't thought about some of those things because I didn't have kids involved in that. So it helped me give feedback on how the timing would work. Again, I say utilize the parent groups. The parent group boards in each school can sit amongst the six or seven of themselves and give Dr. Gascon a list of, here's why we think it'll work or why we think it won't work per school. Still you do the survey, but it's nice to have, they are the representatives of that school. They know the school parents better than anybody else. I think for the students, excuse me, you also utilize the SABs and the student councils in each of the school. Make them feel like they're really involved in something that might make change and happen and have their say heard. The other thing I want to say on behalf of the class of 2024, my son, I really hope this goes into effect right away. And just to give. I really hope this goes into effect right away. And just to give some perspective on that, is I do remember when my oldest son in 2014, entering the high school, went that freshman year in a normal school year. And I was part of the group that looked into, under Mr. Lockren's brilliant direction of instituting the rotating schedule, looking into all that. They went on the school tours, see how it was working. And it was supposed to be introduced in January of 2015 to be implemented, got a little delayed over there, but eventually, I think it was like later in the school year, around this time, that it finally got introduced. So that was like March, April, May, somewhere around there of 2015, and it was implemented in September of 2015. So I have full confidence that it can be done. To me, the rotating schedule was a much bigger thing to take on than this. You had to find where you're going to put 900 kids at one time, where there wasn't extra cafeterias or anything. There was a lot of safety things, everything else that went into it. I'm, I'm sure I'm simplifying it, but I believe everyone can do it. And my last comment is circle in front of the high school. Brookdale has not had one single accident since they put it in. So I think that would work. That's my two cents.
Mr. Loggins.
Before we go tonight, just wanted to thank the board for engaging in the discussion about books that may be of concern or the process for public complaint. I know just some observations as I, as I listen to your discussion. I know that Mr. Silo talked about that the board should be the last stop and not the first stop. To which I believe, Mr. Demare, you mentioned something to the effect that that's all well and good. I'm, I'm paraphrasing. That's all well and good, but if the complaint then doesn't feel like they can be heard, they have no, no recourse. I, I would take exception to that in terms of policy and procedure only in this point. The regulation, as it, as it exists, requires me to speak with that person when the complaint is, is issued. And meet with that person, talk with that person, reach a decision. If the person is not satisfied with my decision, I'm required to write a written report and submit it to the superintendent, who then will convene a committee to discuss it. At that point, he will then, according to the regulation, make a recommendation to the board, who, as the last sentence makes clear, certainly can make any decision it wants. But I think akin to the regulation is what Mr. Silo was saying, that you should be the last stop. And as what I heard Dr. Gascon saying, which I, I think everybody else said, before you render any decision, you want to make sure that it's transparent and that it's, what was the word you used, Dr. Gascon? It's weighted. It's not, it's not done on the whim or on something that's, that's pulled out of one paragraph of a 225 book. I know that Dr. Gascon and Dr. Irwin and Ms. Arcero, and if, if necessary, any input you would like from me, will prepare for you an overview of what the book is all about. I can tell you that the book was instituted into our curriculum in 2012. It has been taught successfully for over a decade. There was something else I was going to say about that. Hold on a second. It was, it was taught 2012. It is part of a unit called Individuality and Conformity. And certainly, there are other titles that could fit under that. For whatever reason, none of us, I wasn't at SATs at the time. So I don't think anybody who made that decision, including the board that adopted it, had any recourse or any insights into what that reason was. We, we just don't know. I caution you though, Mr. Ready, to say, well, it's been on, it's been in the curriculum for 10 years. It's time for a change. Things change. Be careful with that. Okay, this Sunday, I know the gala is Saturday night, but this Sunday, we're celebrating the birthday of William Shakespeare, who's been dead for 400 years. And his books live on in every high school and every middle school that I know of, as does The Great Gatsby, as does 1984, as does Brave New World, as does a lot of books that we all know well. And, you know, so we want to be careful about that. That's all I would caution in terms of process and so forth. I look forward to the ensuing discussions. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Demare for bringing up the excellent points that you're making and to put this book in the same category, To Kill a Mockingbird. I'm, I'm not going to touch that one at all. And I don't think that's really what we're suggesting is blaming people. What you're trying to do is mop up things that come to our attention, if it makes sense, and if it doesn't make sense, so be it.
Yep. Mr. Locken, thank you for confirming the process. It, it, it should be treated, I'm thinking in my head of that. And I did look into the process also, something similar to, if we do executive, during executive sessions, like when we go over HIBs or whatnot, maybe we discuss where somebody may be in this process then, so that we're aware of that. So if a community member comes up and wants to discuss something publicly, then we're aware as a board, hey, they're on step four in the process, or so we are aware.
Listen, I just want to make clear that had, had the person come to me, I would not have, if we did it. In fact, I had a prior experience with that person's spouse about the hate you give two or three years earlier. And I was extremely responsive immediately. So I wish I'd had the opportunity to discuss it. And I just wanted everyone to be clear that should anything like that be brought to my attention, I will give it my due diligence. I would never, I would never brush it under the rug.
Can I say, as, as, as a board member, I, I get the chain of command, the process, but as a parent, I don't, I don't really care. I'm going right to the person I want to get the answers from and who I, you know, who I feel where I'm going to be heard. So, you know, you can't, you can buck the system in certain situations, especially.
It also needs to be, not the chain of command, needs to be the chain of command. And let's be candid, it needs to not be the chain of denial. Okay, it has to function. And over the years, this has nothing to do with any personnel. But the reality is, over the years, and you weren't here, Dr. Gascon, there's a chain of command, and then there has also been a chain of denial. And that's what we need to make sure that we avoid now moving forward.
I just want to be clear before, Kim, real quick. I, in none of my conversation, am I pointing fingers at anybody or how the books were originated? I didn't even look into that. That wasn't even a thought process. It's been brought to our attention. I, I do feel like there's some controversy around it. It's certainly out there nationally discussed that there's controversy. So I guess we have to find out where this, we can, we could recommend to the parent or parents' guardians who have an issue to start the process. And maybe this is something we do moving forward. They start the process, we get updates on where they are in the process. And then if it gets to us, then we vote on it.
I, I think, you know, I'd, I think that the, the culmination of, of, of my comments and, and, and sort of my proposals for future actions, I think the board was in a good place. And so, you know, we'll, we'll end on that and, and understand that, to me, it's about, I, I think the way we, we start to earn, you know, in, if there are in some folks' eyes, in some folks' eyes, there's been a loss of trust or confidence. And, and whether it's, it's not necessarily an individual person, I think that now in these times, I think there, I think people are sort of inherently distrustful of institutions, right? And so we have to work, I think, extra hard to, to maintain and build that trust and confidence. And the way we do that is again, with transparency, you know, with, with giving people access to the resources, making sure that they're clear on their process, on their rights, right? And then, of course, as the board, as the governing body, that you're likewise, that the administration, and I mean the superintendent is operating transparently with you and giving you the information you need proactively in a forthright manner so you can act and you can vote intelligently into your beliefs. So I, I think, I think this has been a really productive conversation. I think it's, it's good steps in the right direction. And, you know, next month, we'll, we'll bring forward and we'll have a good public conversation about the book. And board members will have all the information they need to make a, make an informed decision.
Cool.
I just wanted to say, no, to Deb, just to keep in mind that when we talk about, because you, and I've heard you say it before, that our parent groups are like the bloodline to schools and I have, I am never able to attend any parent meeting except for when they were on Zoom during COVID, because I'm a working parent and there's a lot of us working parents and a lot of, and like on one of the things, it was like, you know, we're looking for volunteers, but you have to be able to attend meetings at 9:30 in the morning. And no, oh yeah, I mean, it, it's up to you, but I, I just, so just keep in mind that you're the lifeline, which I agree, and you have like a lot of our emails and stuff, but you don't necessarily represent the half of town that are the working.
Okay, two things. I'm not saying they should be the end-all. I'm saying that, and not only from meetings, just from knowing your parents. You know how they respond to things? You know what people chatter? They tend to talk to them. I tend to know more people, I think, in the school than some other people because of being involved like that. That's what I meant, to bounce some things off of them that way. But I will say, Kim, my biggest pet peeve is the parents that complain exactly about what you said. And there's two reasons. You have to have a staff member at a nighttime meeting and for contractual reasons, a lot of them will not come and then we can't do that. But when we did it, every single time, nobody showed. We have night meetings. I'm not involved in any of it anymore, but we made a point to have night meetings. When I was in Village, we did it every other month.
At Village, yeah.
Nobody showed.
I was there when I was, well, when I was there, I was there.
Opposite times. But yeah, it, it's just like anything else. You try to offer these things to parents and, you know, people make important what they want to be important. But yeah, it's a shame.
Thank you, Deb. Well, thanks, everyone, for a very productive committee of the whole meeting. Unless there's nothing else, we do not need to go into executive session. So a motion, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. All right. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.